And I want to begin by apologizing for a comment I made at the last school board three-minute opportunity. I said, "Cam McMillan School District is one of the least open and transparent school districts." Now, today, I did an informal survey this morning of Washington County School Districts, and out of fourteen school districts, five did live streaming or videotaping of the meetings, five did audio taping of the meetings, three didn't do any taping of the meetings, and one did not respond to my survey where I couldn't connect with a live person to get a response. So according to my informal survey, Cam McMillan is in the next-to-the-last group of Washington County School Districts in regards to school board meeting transparency. But I think that may be the best practice for transparency, considering the nature of your positions and the positions and divisive positions in our political and societal systems. As I have said a number of times, you have a very important job and great responsibilities. So I thank you for your service as a whole. Also, in regards to my comment regarding the letter on the Cam McMillan website regarding the PA Auditor General's inspection, the letter was not signed, therefore, I have no way of knowing if it was a group think from the administration and the school board or from your group of solicitors. There is no transparent way of knowing. If I was on the Auditor General's team, I would not have selected Cam McMillan for an inspection, because I've seen Joni Mansman show up at these school board meetings. Thanks, Siri. You can keep taking time. I've seen her show up at these meetings, talk about what she does, I heard about how she goes to trainings and how she goes above and beyond what is expected. I was a health and safety inspector for PA licensed and registered child cares for twenty years, among other inspections. There are so many inspections that were required and so few inspectors, we had to do random sample inspections. I think they all need to be inspected. So even though, if I didn't think Cam McMillan needed to be inspected, because of my limited knowledge of Joni Mansman's credentials and capabilities, which are amazing, it wouldn't be just fair, equitable, and ethical to not inspect Cam McMillan based on these factors. So, and I think the letter was a little bit discrediting to the Auditor General's position. Their job, you know, they should be inspecting all of them, and it should be looked as a positive inspection to help the school districts, to do what Ms. Mansman has to do on her own. So, yeah, when I first saw the letter, I said, "No, uh-uh, no. Don't rally the troops or the community against the Auditor General. He's just doing his job." And he even said, I believe, that you were compliant in everything. So, I don't know what criteria they used. We used random samples, but if somebody had a lot of complaints and a history of non-compliance, then they were put up on top of the list for inspections, but I don't think that was the case.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your comments.
Thank you.
Administrator, report stuff. I'm just looking at you there first. So the first thing I want to talk about tonight is on the agenda for approval next week. And the committee met just yesterday, representation from each grades span, directors, and because we didn't have a chance to get it back to the committee for editing, once that happens, I'll get it to you guys to, so you have ample time to review before you approve it. Well, I guess there is that. I think that's got a slim chance, but anything goes. Just some key things I wanted to bring up in case there was any questions or concerns. Graduation, the way the calendar worked out, we'll be able to end school on May thirty-first. And that hasn't happened since I've been around. And with that, it is a Friday, it would be the last day for students. It was determined that graduation would be held on Friday, which is also something. And with it being the last day of school, we don't want to have make-up days after the school year concludes, because that can lead to a whole host of other things, you know? You're graduated officially, and now you're not really under my control, so to speak, as a student anymore. So graduation would be held outside, weather permitting, and it would be held inside, otherwise. And that would be the day, May thirty-first. The other thing that this calendar provides for is parent-teacher conferences earlier than we've had in the past. I would often hear from parents, you know, say, "Can we do this a little sooner?" We do have a contractual hurdle when they should occur that has really prevented us from doing it in the past, but the way the calendar worked out with when the nine weeks concludes, we've met that criteria, and we'll have them early in November on this calendar. It typically was the Monday after Thanksgiving in the past. Another thing I just want to say in regards to this calendar, I've been getting a number of questions, not a number, but a few questions Michael and I get, you know, "Snow day, FID day, I like this, I don't like that." There's definitely, you know, people will have their opinion, but we did build snow days into this calendar. Sometimes the situation presents itself where a FID day may not be the best option, such as December twenty-third was one of those. So we can still use a snow day if it's the most appropriate, and we will be, the recommendation now is to proceed with FID application to the state to again be able to do that flexible instructional in the future. So that's on there. And also, holiday breaks are pretty much in line with what we're accustomed to, but I will say there is not a two-week break at winter as we have this year, so, yeah. Health and safety plan, any questions about calendars or concerns? Good. Health and safety plan is on the agenda. There's no changes to the health and safety plan. We're required to review it every six months, and it was reviewed by the pandemic team. No recommendations to change anything, and just to throw it out there, we're still, you guys are wearing similar shirts. It's just got me looking right at the camera. Morgan is still reporting every Friday the number of audit cases in the state, so there are still some things, you know, that we're required to do from the state. And that meeting is the one that precipitates the mail-in call parents. Ah, well, no, but in part, that was just a reminder to, hey, there's still protocols in place when you do test positive, who to notify, and it was just coincidental. The school nurses reached out and said, "Hey, seems like people have forgotten," you know? So that prompted the reminder.
And that could possibly be why the cases have been kind of lower? I mean, there has only been a handful that have been reported each week. So that's why I, I guess, I go up for that reminder.
Last thing I wanted to mention is Wylandville Design and Development Team met today. Exciting time. So as we progress, today was just a kickoff meeting. We're looking at, you know, enrollment capacities, we're looking at how many regular classrooms we project to be needing, specialized spaces, any specialized programs, how large do you want your large group based on enrollment, looking at what Muse has, you know, is that sufficient? We have the two Muse principals here, you know, "Hey, gym and bleachers is good, cafeteria maybe a little larger." So collecting all that input for the architects who were at the meeting. They're going to take all that information back, and they're going to put together some concepts. So once that happens, building and grounds will be the next step. We'll be presenting at building and grounds some different concepts to consider, and then as that process becomes more defined, we expand the input circle to go to interviews with teachers and to come back with different designs, you know, and refine the process. It's worked really well for us with our other projects, so it's the blueprint we're sticking with right now. But for those of you, you know, who are anxious to see where it's at, the next time it shows up, it'll be at building and grounds.
Are we going to leverage anything that we did at Musso or?
That was the attempt, you know, to the Muse 2.0. You know, it was, he did lay Muse down on the property, like sort of a, like, you know, to see, and yeah, I mean, it could work, but they still need to do a lot with, you know, taking what we provided today, because what it's going to do is it's going to pump up Muse a little bit, you know, a little bigger. All right. Any questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Taylor?
Yep, so we give an update on our emergency substitute academy. That academy kicked off last Monday, which was January thirtieth. We had twenty-five candidates that paid the registration fee and actually started a course, which is in a virtual format, so they can work at their own pace and finish at their leisure. We already have two that finished the course, are ready to do their observations and actually transition into the classroom. So some of them work faster than others, and I'll keep you posted as the rest of those twenty-three work through, complete, and do their observations and get into the classrooms. Get into the time of the year where our sub pools are start to dive down and they're depleted. So the timing of this, I think, is good, and it'll give us a shot at the norm for some sub teachers. So I'll keep you posted as to how many of them finish that course. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and give an update on its benefits enrollment, we have an open enrollment period that we do typically in May every spring, so we have a chance to meet with our open enrollment partner, who is American ability, last week, and we're tentatively scheduled to have our open enrollment start about April seventeenth into the second or third week of May. So we usually have about a month or below. We had a good discussion with them, there's some things that we want to work on to make it a better experience, a better user experience for our employees, and just make it a more streamlined process, but it's about the third year that they've been here, so, and I think we're making good progress, and it's good to get an early start on that, so we're going to go to school.
Did you, at our patients meeting today, I'm representing, an opportunity for grants for help, they send that to you soon, except they do?
Yes.
So we have, we have the ability to accept five hundred grants for help.
We've sacrificed, yes.
All right, any questions for Tim?
I have a question. You mentioned that at this time of the year, the sub pool starts to kind of get depleted. Is it because we've put subs in longer-term placements, or why does it get depleted?
Yep, that's part of it. So as our day-to-day subs kind of glint out or maybe chase a higher daily rate somewhere else, we take the ones that are left, when they move into building sub positions, or they move into a long-term sub position. So our day-to-day sub pool is kind of where we struggle. And we've worked with Dr. Toranto and some of the building principals on that, and it happens every year. So, yeah, it's not a surprise, and so I think the timing of the sub academy is actually great this year, because it'll be a good shot.
And this is the first time we kept sub academy, or this is?
This is.
Okay. Sorry, is numbers in line with what we've seen before, like twenty-five? Is that a good number? And then what percentage do you think?
Yeah, we've had this high as about twenty-eight or thirty before, all right? So this is really a pretty good class, and I think the timing of when we're doing it has something to do with that. They've been calling Rachel and asking her, "When are you going to run your sub academy?" So there's been some anticipation and some energy out there, so I think when we did our blast, they responded.
And what percentage do you think?
Well, we're going to stay after them. Yeah, we're going to stay after them. We love to see, you know, if we could get, if we could get fifteen or seventeen of them to finish, that would be very happy.
Any other questions?
All right. Carl. Good evening, everyone. Just an update, the middle school construction. We continue to work on punch list items throughout the building. A few milestone dates that we anticipate are the auditorium completion on February twenty-seventh, rubber track and landscaping by April twenty-sixth, and radio frequency system by March twenty-third. We have a team order prepared, and on the agenda for the new boardroom desk, we anticipate a March completion date on the production and installation of the desk getting through. The two memorial benches that were donated for the new central office will be installed February fourteenth, next week. We've school street, we actually have submitted all required documentation to Cecil Township for approval. Once approved, we will submit a final approval. The project is projected to bid in April, working to be completed with some baseball assault ball serve. We have scheduled a new instruction kickoff meeting for February fifteenth, which is off next week, and we'll pull receive and anticipate the work schedule at that picture. Down here for skating projects, the new scoreboard will be installed next week and fully operational by November month. We're seriously trying to find out whether the board will be able to manage or begin to work with that, or the schedule early Sunday. Mr. Chambers already touched on our new Wylandville design kickoff meeting that was held earlier today, and fellas in the central elementary AC. We've been exploring design options for air conditioning, building, time, time, bidding, lead time, materials, and anticipate a summer twenty-twenty-four condition.
Yeah, and that was basically caused by one of the Michael Porter comments, had it been fifteen weeks. Hello, my mom. All right, any questions for Carl?
Can I just make a comment about the benches? Although the benches are going to be installed in there for display on the fourteenth, there would be a photo up available on the twentieth at one-third, and Morgan will be there. So if you'd like to take a picture with the garden and the benches and what have you, you're welcome to join us out front there.
So I'll have a report this week, and I will have a report next week, and the reason is the budget finance meeting usually never falls after an agenda meeting, so there are some things that I'm not prepared to fully discuss this evening, but I will next week before you go. There's some placeholders that after we have the budget finance meeting. But I have a decent report tonight. I'm passing around, kind of to pick up on where we left off at last month's agenda meeting with the auditor general's report. I have been asked a few times, and in a call that, like when I have in North Allegheny, there had been, had were some questions about like where, what kind of fund balance is there? So I went ahead and I took our analytics pool that we have, our analytics, frontline analytics, and there was a chart, and I took the chart and I pulled all the underlying data. So every school has to submit AFR data to the state. It's not complete for two thousand twenty-two yet, because there, believe it or not, are some schools that don't have their AFR done. But I think this report is very significant in continuing our conversation and our transparent conversation about monies. What I did is this pool is all assigned, committed, unassigned, I then totaled it, I put the school district's revenue on here, and then I did a percentage of revenue. So let me explain this report, because there's some things on here that I found shocking when I did this. So I wanted to see where Cam Mac was on the list, I'll be on, because that was my main goal, and to see where the other eleven schools were. But I actually found something out that I took my breath away. If you read the article I passed around that some of my peers had sent, I sorted it, so let me look at the first hundred schools. When you look at my orange highlights, those are cyber charter schools. So when I get to the number a hundred, you see there's just a handful.
Are those all cyber charters, charters and cyber?
Cyber or charter. So what I did is I took all the school districts in Pennsylvania and all cyber and charter schools. I deleted CTCs and intermediate units, because they're really not apples to apples here. So we know through our audit report that unassigned column cannot be higher than eight percent, and that is according to the governmental accounting standards board. And we can't go in unassigned above eight percent. Assigned are things that are like prepaid, and some, and things that sometimes we have to set aside according to accounting standards. And then committed would have to have had a board action to commit it. So if you flipped a page, and I'm going to come back to page one, but if you flipped a page, and this is twenty pages.
Seventeen. Seventeen. If you're looking for us.
No, yeah, but we're on page seventeen out of twenty. And I want to point out, this is for two thousand twenty-one, so our revenue in two thousand twenty-one was ninety-five million. That was, our total of our fund balance in the general fund was nine point seven percent. Eight percent of that was in unassigned, because we follow rules here, follow the law, and then we had a hundred and eighty-nine thousand and one point five million in committed and assigned, for a grand total of nine point seven. Ninety-five million dollar revenue budget, one point seven in reserves. You heard our internal auditors tell you that that is, you want to have reserves. So I just want to point out, we're not in the hundreds or the seventies, and of the twelve school districts, we were the last, as I indicated in our response to the auditor general.
All the other schools in the state are included in?
Yes, I highlighted the other eleven schools in blue, and you could go back for transparency purposes and look at prior audits of our internal auditors that follow the governmental accounting standard board rules and regulations. And in every audit that I can recall in the last decade, fund balance has been pointed out by our internal auditors. Now, what is a break in SARM, when I sorted this, I didn't see the top yet, and when I got to the top and saw these cyber charters, look at number three on page, number seven and eight on page one. This is where there should be rage, and this is where there should be audits. They don't have any assigned or any committed, so they don't, apparently aren't held to the same standard of eight percent in unassigned. They have seventy-nine and eighty. And if you look over, I added enrollments too, so number eight has a hundred and fifty-four students and had almost eighty percent of their revenues in reserve. So I think this is honestly, and was tried, in our responses, what we were trying to convey is really a problem. So if you take this, and then you watch the news or read things that were handed out this week, you heard that the, there was a lawsuit settled in Pennsylvania about the funding formula. So how is all this intertwined? Well, back before I started, and that's like sixteen years ago, you used to be guaranteed as a business manager that when you built your budgets, you would get a two percent hold harmless per state revenue. So what that meant is when you built your budgets, you put two percent increase over the prior year. Everybody, it was just a known fact, that that's just what you did. But they changed the funding formula, and if you recall, at a few budget finance meetings, I shared this, but it's extremely complicated. Now with our new funding formula, we're, if you envision a pie, pieces of the pie get locked in when certain things happen, and then you get a cut of that pie. So you can't get your cut to where everything gets locked in. And if you heard me a few minutes ago say, "There are schools that haven't submitted their AFRs for twenty-two yet," like that messes up the funding formula. So the other thing, the funding formula is extremely complicated, and I can bring it back and show it to you, they've had workshops that are all day, just in understanding the funding formula. You could actually get less money in a given year, depending where your things lock in, because it's all what everybody else did and where you fit in that pie. So there were small districts that don't have the reserves, they don't have a local tax base, and had trouble making even their summer payroll, because you don't have cash flow coming in then. So they filed a lawsuit saying the funding formula is not fair to the districts that don't have money. And a number of my peers testified, in fact, one of the twelve school districts that were selected for the auditor general's audit was selected to testify in the Senate for this funding formula. So we're hearing on one side that you shouldn't have fund balance as a recommendation by the auditor general, but they just lost a lawsuit, and much of the testimony was about fund balance, was about plan con. If you don't set money aside and you take plan con away, how do you, how do you do a building project? If you're a school that's struggling, how do you, how do you make any repairs? So that, the timing, basically fund balance, it's necessary in order to survive, and especially as Mr. Zapanic has pointed out before to all of you, there have been times when only has the budget not passed by June, one time it was passed in January. So changing the date doesn't impact me doing what I was hired to do for the Cam McMillan, so it's true, it also passed the budget. The people that need to make the date are the people that just blatantly disregard the date. Changing it for me is not going to solve the underlying problem of it doesn't get done on a timely manner. Plan con is a huge issue, because if, just for example, and I say this all the time, but I've never quantified it, I was in a conversation with our finance team last week, because they're coming to Brizano Tuesday at the budget finance meeting, if you're available to come to that. And they ran the numbers, and I don't want to throw an exact number out, because I didn't write it down, but it was in excess of ten million dollars we saved by getting that plan con legislation changed for the middle school. So that would have cost the taxpayers that much more money, had you not got that legislation changed. So when we say it was significant, it was significant. When we get good bond ratings and good bond prices, it's because we have fund balance. Our bond rating agencies, and you're going to hear this again on Tuesday, won't, they will tell us, "We're not going to upgrade your rating unless you have so much of fund balance," and our debt ratio is important too. So we're kind of in a position where, you know, this lawsuit being settled on the heels of the auditor general is interesting, because we have like competing things being said. And so try to navigate that for a school district, when you don't have all the tools that you need to do. So it's, I was asked if there is Senate testimony over the auditor general for if I would testify on behalf of the things that are important, and I said that I would, because I think it's very significant for everyone to understand, like I shared last week in our agenda meeting or last month, there's many factors that go in to why you need fund balances. To just say, "Don't have it," you know, every time you guys approve agendas, every month, and I just want you to make a mental note to yourself, I won't point it out, how many things we say budgetary reserve, budgetary reserve, budgetary reserve, if we didn't have reserves, where would that money come from? So that hopefully, and I plan to do, I'm part of that spotlight of the month for frontline analytics, I'll be sharing this in that call, because I think we need to have that conversation and have people understand that like, we're not the ones who are the huge fund balances, it's the cyber charter schools.
I think that call you're making reference to, by the way, is the call that you've been asked to participate in for members from the state.
So next week, I'll talk about a refunding opportunity in our one-time expense list. I need to, the committee needs to discuss that first, so those are two things that you'll see tonight with not a lot of information, but I will report next week before we go back, and you're more than welcome to come to budget finance meeting. Cafeteria renewal is up this year, so I'll be frantically working on that till the end of the year as well. I have a meeting next week to talk about a number of things within the cafeteria department that I should be able to report back on. We do have our food committee meeting slated for the twenty-third, and I think that is it, unless anyone has any questions. Oh, real quick, the March budget finance meeting will most likely be canceled, because I won't have any new information to update the budget for all of you. The things that we're waiting for are still unknown. The April twelfth budget meeting will be a big budget meeting. If there's one you don't want to miss, it's probably going to be that one. Then the plan is May tenth to recommend a proposed fi, I'm anticipating that at the May tenth, we'll have a budget finance meeting at that month's voting meeting recommending, approving the proposed final budget, and then I'm also anticipating that we'll be able to recommend a final budget at the June thirteenth meeting.
Do the schools that don't submit their AFR in a timely fashion, do they get penalized at all, or is any state coming to them?
I don't know. Mine has never been a day late, and you've never?
I think it's, but I've never seen them follow through. The first usually gets them the file, but I've never seen them withhold funding.
So at the end of this report, you saw red, those of the schools that deficit by balances, that we were once on that list. Typically, what I've seen or heard across the state, the ones that don't submit their AFRs timely, two things have happened. Either they're in the deficit zone, this is just being the organization, or you have turnover of the business manager, and... And they weren't there for the prior years and they're sometimes delayed and getting, those are the two big reasons that I am aware that usually can do it.
Thank you for asking a question. It was brought up a couple of comments, I wanna ask about it. Every school in the state gets audited by the auditor general, rotating, correct?
No question.
Right, okay? That's not what this is, this is not what the auditor general did this time.
No.
It's nothing to do with looking at our finances, which are audited every year by Cypher and Cypher, every five years by the auditor general, right?
We, I've had three auditor general regular audits. The first one was the deficit that we had to write, and the recommendation, you can read this, it's on their website. We had to write policies and procedures to how we would restore fund balance and then maintain how can fund balance is going forward. The second audit, we got accommodation, even though there was like one or two like small things, not in my department and some other, they they do the whole district. We actually got accommodation, and the third one, I got a fat, there was a fast pass trap. I actually got fast passed because we did so well on the prior one. This was a special performance audit.
This is something the auditor general didn't do in the ordinary course they're doing. They chose to do this and targeted certain schools, correct?
That's my, I mean, I, there was two sets, there were two prime criteria.
But under their criteria, true or false, we didn't even qualify for the criteria the auditor general established to do this.
I didn't believe so.
Why just, I, I, so, these are just the opinions of the auditor at this point. But this was a politically motivated audit with no other purpose than to lay the foundation for legislation that was going to move to restrict schools from not being able to raise taxes if they had a fund balance over eight percent. The auditor general, and I read the entire report, and I saw the press conference, and it was done. First of all, I don't think that auditor general understands school law well enough to be the payroll clerk here in Kansas. But that's beside the point. But what they were blaming, that's the, what they were trying to do is say, we're skirting all this money off the side as a ruse. They actually used scare quotes in his, in his press conference. Right, to to imply that that's why we were, that's why those money was removed. This school district has done probably close to two hundred million dollars of construction between our brand-new, huge elementary school and huge middle school, and our high school expansion, and all of that. And the total amount over the allowable eight percent is one point seven percent. It's ridiculous. But if we look at this, the, every single charter school, assuming Miss Manford's data is right here, is in the top hundred. We're at like five hundred seventy percent, we're in the bottom. It's absurd that they would even, you know, bring this up, like try to target us for, you know, this type of thing. You know, the bond rating at the school district has gone, the bond credit rating has gone up twice, I believe, in Miss Manford's tenure here. And every time that rating goes up, our ability to borrow goes up, but also the cost of borrowing that money saves the taxpayers of this district. And it's unfair for them to come along. You know, I read that, and the thing that came to my mind is, what they're basically alleging is, to use an analogy, okay? They're a traffic cop, and we can go into green light. And the traffic cop is like, well, I think it should be red, so we're gonna raise the buck, it's BS. I'll go back to that.
We have the little false portrait cap and a little bit to do with what's going on there. Hand all those out, this is just, I'm not gonna read everything, worry, I'll just go through some highlights. We did, you know, moving on from girls soccer, we had a, we did hire Matthew Finnegan as CM grad as a, as a soccer coach at the end of that season. Boys soccer did make the playoffs, they lost in the first round to Fox Chapel. Girls volleyball had a really good year and continues to just be one of the more dominant programs in the WPIL. With double-digit section champs, and you can see all the honors for all the kids. A lot of those girls are very young, some of them freshmen. We have some, apparently some really good players, top D-one talent at the freshman sophomore level. And Sheila Mitchell was, was given the coach of the year for six A, which, she does a great job, works really hard, and coaches both of our teams. Football made the playoffs, a lot of kids recognized. Boys golf is fourth in the section. And then winter sports, it's pretty much ongoing right now with swimming, basketball, basketball, we put the records right there. But as far as wrestling, you know, I think everybody knows it, it's the Adivon. Yeah, Adivon tonight, Chambersburg at the Giant Center in Hershey. So they've, they're team section and team Whipple champs. There's some tournament records, just to get an idea of, you know, who's been doing, a lot of kids winning a tournament, some placing highs. So Coach Krenzla and company have been doing a really good job, so everything else there, you can pretty much read it, so.
Yeah, Lily Bayne, who made the second team in Big Fifty-Six, she actually made the international junior team. She went to the International Soccer.
I'm trying to get her to play on my Steelers Five football girls team. But yeah, sometimes the all-conference teams are, you know. Lily Bayne, she's young.
Any questions for Mike?
So some other exciting news that was going on. You may have seen some police cars that were lined up outside of Borla Manor last month. They had their annual police officer law enforcement appreciation lunch, which you have to do every year. About last month, and then earlier this month, all the elementary schools celebrated their anniversary on the first day of school.
I work with North Trevene Township Police Department and I am the School Resource Officer at Wildville Public Elementary School.
I am Officer Keith Strain and I am employed by Cecil Township Police Department and I am the SRO here at Cecil Intermediate School.
I'm Officer Michael Lepansky, I'm a police officer of North Trevene Township and I am assigned to McCann-McMillan Middle School.
Hello, I'm Officer Spicer with the North Trevene Township Police Department. I'm currently assigned to the School Resource Officer position at McCann-McMillan High School.
So my relationship with this building is much like family. I come here, the students are like my kids, the teachers are like my brothers and sisters. My day-to-day responsibilities include securing the building, personal performance, fixing everything, everybody's safe inside the building. I also teach Alice, which is our active shooter, foster of the teachers and the students. I teach the two good for drugs program and I also build relationships with kids, which I think is one of the most important things that we do so that kids understand that we're in enforcement just like everybody else, put our hands on the same way and build a nice relationship, helps them understand that.
Starting with the day-to-day responsibilities, pretty much every day it's the same thing. In the morning, I make sure the kids get in safely and at the end of the day, my dismissal, I make sure they get on right buses and I help with the bus dismissal. And I also get A and M, kindergarten in and out. Some of the other things that I do are monitor the grounds, make sure all the gates are closed outside, the doors are locked. I have cameras in my office that I can monitor. And then also throughout the year, I do teach in classrooms from K to 4th grade. The kindergarten presentation is really emergency skills, how to dial a telephone when you need help, things about stranger dangers. All of the 4th grade where we talk about communication skills, setting goals, baby, things like that, and I do that throughout.
My favorite part's gotta be the kids, obviously. It could be many different avenues when it comes down to kids. I just like interacting with them, walk up to the front door every morning, greeting them and they talk, I mean, they greet me back. I'll walk around the cafeteria, the hallways, I'm just talking to them, usually about sports or whatever's going on in their life if they want to share it. I love the questions they ask me, usually the random questions and I try to answer them the best I can without getting too many details, but they're always great about asking the whole questions.
Interacting with the kids, I just think it's good that we're here so we can show the kids that police are real guys too, we have families and we're easy to talk to and we're just here to help.
Well, so far, it's gotta be the kids. I've always enjoyed working with young people. I tell the kids and the students in there every day how excited I am to work with them. I coached 7th grade football, last year was my first year and I did that in anticipation of being in the school. And you start seeing the impact it could have on these kids and seeing just what a positive word, a little encouragement can do and once you start doing that, you really start seeing changes and it really works.
And I'm gonna share this next week, so you guys can watch the whole thing later when I actually share it out.
Well, I thought I said the most delay, or is it available on the website?
Yeah, I can send you all the link if you wanna watch the whole thing, it's nine minutes. I tried to make it short, but their answers were so good that I made it a little longer.
Good job, thank you very much.
Good evening. Just a special note about our SROs, we're fortunate to have our School Resource Officers. They go through specialized training to work in our schools and these individuals are dedicated and they work well with the kids, the staff, and just can't say, "Oh, get them to one of our SROs." First item, just wanted to bring the board's attention, community's attention, on February 22nd, at our Curriculum Committee meeting, we will have a oral presentation on Seneca Valley's cyber program. They have a partnership with over seventy-five other school districts in the state. They've been up and running for seventeen-plus years. They use a, their cyber program is called Edgenuity. And when I was researching different platforms going back to the summer, that's a platform that caught my attention, that's a platform that had the best reviews, user-friendly, both from a user, teacher standpoint and a student standpoint, everything flowed. So they use Edgenuity and actually our IU just moved towards Edgenuity, which is good because their platform is just funky as well. And it's an impressive cyber platform. The reason why, you know, we're looking to start our own cyber program is two reasons. One, cyber schools are the worst performing schools in the state, and now, worse. I mean, if a K through 12 public school performed at the level these cyber schools perform, they would be taken out of the state. Two, most importantly, and that's the most important reason, the two, is in reality, is it's a cost saver. So we're on pace to lose over three million dollars in cyber, that's most ever. So if we take on this cyber program, using this year's money, it'd be around four thousand sixty dollars per student to educate a child in our cyber program, if we take on this platform. Currently, and this is for regular education students, currently we pay twelve thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars per cyber, so if they go to PA Cybers, twelve thousand more is up for them. So if we get twenty-five percent back of those students, we're looking at over four hundred thousand more savings. If we can get back fifty percent of our students, we're looking at over nine hundred thousand more savings. So those are the two primary reasons that we're looking to do this. Presentation will, everyone's invited to attend our Curriculum Committee meetings. That presentation will take place on the 22nd. I'm sorry, 1:00 P.M., I think it's different than another, I think it's 1:00. So looking forward to that and getting those details out to you. If all goes well, stars aligned, we're looking to have this up and started 23-24 school year. Mr. Crowley, Mrs. Chambers and I are pretty optimistic that can happen. Second item here, any questions on that? Second item is the structured literacy update here. I've shared, I don't know if I've shared, is that this meeting or our curriculum meeting I know for sure. House Bill 2045, PA House Bill 2045 approved mandates of structured literacy training for all K through 12, and actually higher education from 12. By the end of 23-24 school year, I'm proud to say that CM has already started moving this direction before that House Bill was put forward. That involves training and using phonics and decoding grades K-1 and 2, which we're already doing with, very impressively. Our elementary principals are going through letters training, which is pretty intensive, structured literacy training. They will be the only principal group that I know of that has gone through, has pulled this training, so we're really proud of them. The plan is for next school year, any teacher that has an influence teaches reading or co-teaches reading, special education, sports reading, will go through structured literacy training. We'll have it included later next year for sure. K-1 and 2 has officially moved away from balanced literacy, so we're really excited about that. Grades 3 through 5 will move away from balanced literacy next year, we have implemented a new program there. That was, that occurred because January 6th, we're in service, we had a formal training for K-1 and 2 teachers with GOs, which are decodable books, so kids are learning about decoding, phonics, and then the GOs were decodable, so that was a missing piece. We purchased these GOs, so the kids are actually practicing reading those phonics and decoding skills. And what's really neat about these GOs is they're actually also reading to learn. And I was really touched today, because I was in a review talking to an EMO teacher, and I went outside the 1st grade hallway and there's this giant mural student work display. And it was based off the Cory Devil book that they read, that 1st graders read. And what's really cool is when I was at South Central and Wildville, they're all reading the same book and the 1st graders were using the same vocabulary, adaptation, camouflage, and they can tell you about it. So they're not only learning to read, but they're reading to learn, and that's the key here. And that's what's gonna be so special about our program moving forward as a result. Also on January 6th, we have 12 teachers taking part in a reading pilot, or piloting a program called CKLA, C-K-L-A, Core Knowledge Language, grades 3 through 6. That's comprehensive knowledge vocabulary building reading program. They have common themes that allow in-depth learning in those content areas, so it's not, "I'm gonna read a story here and then the next day we're gonna read a story about a different topic." They're spending weeks on the same content area, both fiction and non-fiction, it's conscious of nonfiction, the themes are based around social studies and science, but then they read stories and texts about that. The vocabulary is common, they have tie-ins, and it's tied in from 1st grade level to the other, so spiraled back, so builds on that knowledge. And really, and we're talking about grades, grade 3 and up, it is that true shift of, okay, we've taught you how to read, now you're gonna read to learn, and there are gonna be connections across principals as you move along. So those 12 teachers have been providing input, I've visited those classrooms. We're all meeting in the group on February 17th, we have 2-hour early dismissal, so I'm looking forward to hearing some more in-depth feedback from those pilot teachers. Next year, we're planning to pilot a similar program in grades 1 and 2. Any questions about structured literacy?
Just, I don't know if any of the rest you have had a positive response to that gap, some people in the community regarding your communication with structured literacy.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing, yeah, that's important. And, yeah, a lot of parents have expressed, teachers share, the same thing, parents are appreciating the shift. And it is, it's a big mind shift for our teachers because they went through training, they went through a different approach and it is approaching reading differently, but they are embracing the challenge and I'm proud to see where they're at. Gonna geek out a little bit on you here, so a couple months ago, I talked about wanting to bring a research-based practices to K through 6 and make sure we're leaning on what cognitive science says about how kids learn. One of those areas is the cognitive load theory, which basically in a nutshell is, you have your working memory and you have your long-term memory. Your working memory is very limited, you can really chunk certain amounts of new information. Your long-term memory is infinite, you can hold infinite amounts of theory in there, depends on how old you are. But, so anytime where we could put information in the long term, that leaves a wider space to learn new content. And one area I wanted to look at was some basic math facts. You've kinda shifted away from, memorization's kind of like a kind of a bad thing, somehow got a bad rap to it, but it's important to understand and have, that our students memorize their basic math facts, including multiplication, third power law, because if a student has to pause and think about, you know, what this multiplication fact is, that is space taken out of their working memory and therefore they're limited to what they can take in, new content lines. So if we can move that to the long-term memory, make it an automatic response, that allows them to learn new content. So there's this tool out there, it's called a 60-second sweep. And I reached, reached out to an old teaching colleague, Mr. Zimmerman, who teaches 5th grade at North Trevene. He and I taught together multiple decades, I think about. And I asked him, I said, "Hey, he teaches 5th grade," I said, "I wanna do this in 4th grade, what are your thoughts?" He said, "I love it, they're not coming to me with those facts." I said, "Can you run this with your students and see how we go?" So how it works is the 60-second sweep is the kids run through digits 2 through 9, there are thirty-one products, thirty-six pairs, then you run through 4, 2 times 2, 2 times 3, you go through the middle section, there's 2 pairs for this. And if they can get through that in 60 seconds, around 60 seconds, that tells us that they have made that automatic and have that memorized and they can take up their working memory with this. So he ran it with his 5th graders and the first month, he just did it a couple times a week, or 4 weeks, the average was a hundred eighty-one seconds. And so it took our 5th graders 3 minutes to get through this, should be a minute. He kept with it, the following month, his students, no matter what background they had, the average for the class was sixty-five seconds. And some kids were running through this in thirty-five seconds and they loved doing it. So pushed out to elementary principals, it's been a part of 4th grade and the board moved the challenge down to 4th grade. So it's just an example of, I'm really proud of Mr. Zimmerman collecting data for me and embracing this and then allowing us to demonstrate what this can be, what we can do with that thing of understanding and it helps others, teachers say, "Okay, my students can do that too."
We'll have a next meeting next week.
Yeah, who wants to try? Under pressure, okay. Almost done here, 7th through 12 update, Mr. Crowley wanted me to give you a couple pieces of information. One, the Seneca Valley cyber program, ironically, we had to move to their program to teach Spanish 2, 3, and 4. Out of born on necessity, we could not acquire a Spanish certified teacher. If you remember last time we fell in this situation, we actually were fortunate to have someone, we're going to move to the country and help us out, but we couldn't find a Spanish certified teacher at all, so we're using the Seneca Valley program that we wanna check out with these students. Today was the first day, so they're learning the system there. There is a Spanish certified cyber teacher supporting the students, there's a substitute non-certified in the classroom that supervises students and they are also trained on how to use the platform. But it does speak to the teacher shortage and the talent pool is limited out there. I've shared this with the admin group. In 1979, twenty-three percent of all college majors were education majors. It's too high, you know, we had an abundance of teachers and not enough jobs. In 2020, only 4% of the people with college degrees are education majors. In order to maintain our current capacity of teachers, that needs to be around 11%.
And what are some of the drivers behind that salary and others?
Well, I mean, that's a major thing, salary, sure, starting salary in particular, I think is an issue, I'm not sure about top salary, especially around this area, you can't really say that. You know, a lot of the mandates, tons of mandates, testing, respect, treatment of teachers, the attrition rate of teachers going into the field is around 50 to 60%, so even the people going into the field, half of them within five years drop out of the field. So how are they treated, how are they being supported, lack of resources, so it's a lot, it's a lot. So what I'm just saying is, we gotta find ways to be creative to maintain our talent because there's no talent out there. So we're losing talent to other school districts, okay? We gotta do something to maintain our talent because we're not gonna get talent back.
What impact do you think if the federal government goes through a minimum starting salary of sixty thousand, impact that'll have on a number of education majors and colleges?
I think it would have impacts, certainly, sure.
That would be a positive impact, but at the same time, there could be quite a negative effect.
Sure, yeah.
After the 3 or 4 years of funding that they say that they would hide.
Yeah, but Mr. Ryan, it does, there are other factors. Other factors we gotta think about on the whole as far as how can we support teachers, how we treat teachers, it's all tied into, it's a multifaceted problem. It's not just. So AP Chemistry Textbook, Mr. Peansick has over here. So this was shared through our Curriculum Committee as well. Mr. Crowley shared that with the curriculum committee, had it on display, that's our, that's going to be hopefully our new AP Chemistry Textbook. And last item from Mr. Crowley was, high school scheduling process is underway, they had a very successful parent scheduling night, a lot of parents showed up, very good turnout, very good questions, they're excited about that. And my very last item, on March 21st, parent council will be in the evening at 6:00 P.M. and I will be presenting on vaping and social media and trying to encourage made parents, especially elementary parents to be there, the sooner you know about this stuff, the better.
Are you gonna get into the dopamine?
Yes, we'll be talking about dopamine.
That's the same thing, we're in the open house, the public.
Correct, at 7:00 P.M. we'll be in the open house anyway.
Tonight I asked Michael about extending from 7:00 to 8:00, but he said we won't kick anybody out at 8:00.
He used to be in the old school. He just moved into this room or something.
Yeah, we have a couple of recognition items. The Warren Manor Elementary School, that was the first time Tier 1, T.I.S. and recognized that the 2022 PA, Pennsylvania PA PBS. We've heard about this before by some of our other elementary schools. Here's yet another elementary school that may recognize, so that's a big deal for us. Each time you promote these logos, you emphasize the commitment that you've made to develop the systems that help develop the whole child by removing all academic barriers to learning and eliminating a number before maybe over the last 12 years in the PA PBS network. There are gonna be a couple of other ads to the recognition section for next week and I'll just give you a sneak peek. At this point, as Mr. Evans reported, we're wrestling Team 1, the Whiffills, and they're underway right now in Harrisburg, so we'll see if that result might be cleaned up Thursday. Also, Becky Lee, our Special Education Director, she has been invited by the Bureau of Special Education to participate in a peer monitoring session and actually, a couple of notes, and we are certainly pleased to have her do that. And what that entails is, the Department of Education will actually train her to be on their team of peer monitors to travel to other school districts throughout the state and determine if they are following the rules appropriately. So we're honored to have the Department of Education recognize our Special Education Department and Mrs. Lee especially for her efforts in directing our Special Education Department and going out there into the state to help others as well. So there, I wanted to share those things.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on, next week we'll vote on the following meeting minutes, the agenda meeting from January 19th, voting meeting from January 26th, the athletic committee meeting from January 30th, grant committee from February 6th, voting on Brown 77th, agenda meeting from tonight, and budget finance meeting from next week. Any questions on any of those? If you haven't already reviewed them, please do so. Then we'll have bill of remuneration for approval next week, we'll have the wage tax reports for approval next week, treasurer's report for approval next week, and the budget transfers for approval next week. Any questions on any of those? All right, moving on, Michael?
We'll have the personnel sheets completed for your review, that's presented tonight for your review as it is at this point, we'll have the blanks filled in by then, ask for your approval. Also the substitute list. Next item is the intermediate Unit 1 general operating budget for next year, 2023-24. We ask that you approve that and it shows an increase over last year in the amount of four thousand eighty-one dollars twenty-five cents.
Is that a small, big annual increase?
Yeah, they're usually non-substantial.
The budget not actual, some of the.
And if I could just chime in, the IU 1 operating budget worsening in increase, I may suggest that part of the reason for the increase is the fact that we just settled a lawsuit against Ringgold who insisted in not having a non-disparagement clause in the settlement agreement and ended, they ended up paying only half of what of the money they owed, part of a compromise in settlement, but I think that the school district should know that they may have to pay a little bit more because Ringgold decided not to pay their fair share.
As you're opening the AA sun for our board to guide you. Mr. Chambers spoke about the school calendar, that's the next item on the agenda. Contracts and agreements, Dr. Tranto spoke of the Seneca Valley School District Cyber Services Agreement, we'll have that on there for your approval. It will be an approval retroactive to February 1st, their ability starts at the beginning of the month, and I think we're actually live already. Renewal, the agreement for the NOX, our demand response program, that's an annual renewal. And then we have a couple of other agreements that go hand in hand. One is hometown for digital ticketing and event management, that's a software program that will enable us to use more online instead of cash purchases for tickets to events. And the Stripe Services Agreement, as I said, goes hand in hand with the hometown programming.
We're gonna start testing those in the spring.
Yeah, and the idea, there is, test it in the spring because we have a minimal number of athletic events going on and that'll help us work out any bugs or glitches we might encounter for going full bloom, right?
And these are still contingent upon legal review, right?
Are we gonna, or have we, or talked to Peters or anybody that's currently using it as to how they have it set up or is it self-explanatory or?
From my, the conversations that I have with Peterson, the financial partners in the setup, were they out, weren't they back in? So I'm guessing he probably has, because he had information from other schools, but I can't speak for him.
I also met with him and I've seen it on Peter's website and it seems pretty easy to replicate on our.
Good, thank you. Next item is utilization of PowerAid funds. Every year after the PowerAid tournament, typically Mr. Volcano donates proceeds to other areas of sports throughout the school district and as presented, he will make a donation in that amount with your approval to the boys' girls' basketball boosters, girls' cross boosters, swimming boosters. And then, and more to come, you're right. There is an item for one-time expenditures and one that appears there at this time is recommendation not to exceed one hundred twenty thousand from budgetary reserve for the branding campaign and there's a number two other, and that's to be determined after having the February 14th Budget and Finance Committee meeting, there'll be discussion about that. There's one fundraiser on here for now for the golf boosters club, there could be a couple of others added between now and next week and if not, well, it'll be on the March agenda. Next item is, Mr. Chambers already talked to us about the health and safety plan, no changes there, masks are still optional. And next item, the purchase of textbooks, that chemistry, AP Chemistry textbook, that's still on the table somewhere for your review, that's what last week. Resolution for general voting proxy, this deals with the Washington County Tax Collection District and they've just opened this up as an electronic means of voting if, for whatever reason, attendees can't meet in person. And Ms. Masman has been our representative there. We have an assessment appeal, we'll ask you to approve, it's authorizing Peacock Keller to enter into a stipulation to settle the tax assessment appeal in 300 Wood Cliff LLC versus Washington County Board of Assessment Appeals in the amount of four hundred and six hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. There's a refunding placeholder and, maybe you can speak to that.
It's also relevant, what we've talked about is the Budget and Finance Meeting, I just wanna, since we're not having a Budget and Finance Meeting in Mark, I wanna start conversation that we have two issues that have potential refunding opportunities out of all of our bonds, we don't have that many to have that. We've been watching it as a financial, the finance team's been watching it in the last year, we have another one that's coming later and there might be an opportunity for some refunding. What that would mean is, we basically refund the bonds and there'll be some savings. Right now, the savings isn't enough to pull the trigger, but what the finance team will be talking about with the. But what the finance team will be talking about with the budget and finance committee on Tuesday is usually when we get into a zone, they think of it as a bullseye, you know, how much you want to get in savings, we'll do a parameters resolution. So that when they need to pull the trigger there, they're authorized to do so. So when the rates are regularly warm in that sweet spot, we'll be able to pull that. So sometime between now and April, I anticipate there being some action to do this, redo one of the fundings.
The next item is the creation of a Big Mac Varsity Club. We have the bylaws attached for your review. Everything checks out and it's ready for your approval if indeed. What will happen if indeed the board approves the club to exist? The following month, you'll find hopefully that there will be a volunteer sponsor at it. And it's a volunteer sponsor through the end of the current school year because this is a new club that hasn't been budgeted. So that then will be absorbed in the new budget going forward next week. In the process for the sponsor, there'll be a posting and we'll see who applies and there'll be a process for selection. And then Mr. Harold spoke of the change orders for the new middle school. That goes to be on there for your approval. For she is stipulated communications for students to be in, as was discussed with you. And then for next week, I'll have, ask Mr. Chambers to refer you any donations received from any department.
Any questions on anything Michael's covered tonight? Any other items of information anybody would like to share? Motion for adjourned?
Motion.